Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening and for the next ninety minutes as we learn about candidates seeking to be elected to the Rock Hill Schools Board of Trustees. On behalf of Superintendent Dr. Bill Cook, Board members and District Administration, welcome to the School Board Candidate Forum hosted by Rock Hill Schools in partnership with our student councils from Northwestern High School, Rock Hill High School, and South Point High School. I am Rock Hill Schools Director of Marketing and Communications, Michael Frost, and tonight I will be serving as the event moderator. At this time, I'd like to introduce our current board members who are in attendance. First Chairman, Ms. Helena Miller. Robin Owens. Ms. Ann Reed. Mr. Brent Falkenberry. And Ms. Wendy Cole. This evening, we will be assisted with students, three students who are representing their high schools, and each of those will ask questions of our candidates this evening. Topics to be addressed this evening are important to our students and future community leaders. I believe that will be evident as they ask questions throughout the evening. As such, all questions have been developed by our student government leaders in partnership with Executive Director of Secondary Instruction, Ms. Jennifer Morrison, and myself. I would like to introduce our student leaders who will be assisting this evening. From Northwestern High School, Milan Louis Harris, who is the junior class president. From Rock Hill High School, Tyanna Wongse, who is the senior class president. And from South Point High School, Katia George, who is the student body president. Our school board is comprised of seven representatives. On November third, our community will elect four individuals out of five available, four, sorry, excuse me, there will be four seats on the ballot on November third. I'd like to introduce candidates seeking office at this time. The at-large seat, Terry Hutchison. And James Burns. Seat one, Patrice Reed Cherry. Seat three, Mildred Douglas and Shawanda Erby. Also on the ballot is Mrs. Wendy Cole. Ms. Cole has just completed or is completing her first term on the board and is running unopposed and has elected not to participate in tonight's forum, however she is in attendance this evening. Win or lose, we thank each of you for your willingness and desire to serve the students and staff in the Rock Hill community. Let's pause now and give each of you a round of applause. Earlier this evening, candidates drew numbers to set the order that they will respond to our first question. Before, before beginning the Q and A with our candidates, please know that all responses will be limited to a maximum of ninety seconds. We respectfully ask that time limits be honored to ensure that we give equal time to candidates and ask as many of the prepared questions as possible. Without further ado, let's get started. Our first question will be asked by Katia George of South Point High School.
Good evening, I'm Katia George, representing South Point High School, and I'm very honored to be here tonight to ask you guys some questions. My first question will be, how do you believe the district and board can bridge the gap between students of different backgrounds and demographics so education in the district is not stratified?
The first question to Ms. Erby.
Thank you for that question. I believe that the number one thing that the district and the board can do to expose their, those students of different background is pretty simple exposure. Just exposing those students to things outside of their, outside of their community and things that they see on a day-to-day basis. Thank you.
I'm Patrice Cherry. I feel that the board has already been working to bridge the gap as far as working with our students of different demographics. We currently offer IVAP courses and career courses for children that are attending ATC. They offer band with the sports, they offer chorus and arts, theater, all of those things that the children can participate in that would help them to engage with each other. I feel that they can also offer things maybe with cultural relevancy that other members of the community may be drawn to be involved in. That would have, can be presented in the schools and the children have opportunity to learn more about different cultures and their differences.
Thank you. Next same question, Ms. Douglas.
That is a really tough question and it is a tricky question in a way, whichever way you look at it, because we have been dealing with differences in background and demographics and education and everything for over the years, many, many years. But I feel like if we keep providing the resources and the personnel and the supplies needed to implement and to enrich, for enrichment and everything, to offer something that will encourage and motivate each student to check out and follow their potentials.
Same question to Mr. Hutchison.
Yes, that is, as the others folks have said, it's a great question and there is no easy answer for it. I think the best thing that we could probably do, we've already been doing all the things that have been already mentioned, but we also need to focus on the student themselves. Every student has a number attached to them, whether it be in dollars or academic numbers, they have numbers attached to them. If we could just get away from the numbers in a sense and just focus on the student. Everybody's in the building for a reason, to learn. If we could just focus there and keep that focus and have it broad all the way across the whole district, I think we'd have some substantial differences on the positive side.
Thank you. Mr. Burns, same question.
It's a great question, thank you. I guess really the elephant in the room is the getting some of these kids back to five-day. There's a lot of kids, especially K through five, that have been left behind. Both some, some kids have two working parents, parents have to get home from work and then have to educate their kids. Some of these parents maybe not even have a GED. We have to get some clarity in an uncertain time. We have to give our parents, our students, and our faculty a clear path forward. Right now, everything's kind of up in limbo due to COVID. I understand COVID is a tough, tough deal, it's a tough issue. Well, tough times don't last, tough people do. Right now is the time for leadership and to make sure we give our parents, our students, and our faculty a way forward in a clear and defined way. Also, our Title I schools have 4K. Why is that not across the board? Kids in preschool, some of them come in already doing arithmetic and reading, why not, why don't we start there? So when they, that bridges the gap. It's a huge gap there for some kids that just get dumped straight into kindergarten. Let's make that, let's lessen that gap. Thank you.
Thank you, that, that ends the, the first question. Thank you for everyone answering. Now to ask question two is Tyanna Wongse.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Tyanna Wongse and I'm honored to represent Rock Hill High here tonight. So my question for you is what policies and practices do you believe should be in place to support student and teachers' mental and emotional health? Thank you.
If this question, if we would have Mrs. Cherry start for us, thank you.
Okay, I feel that the policies that are in place, the schools currently utilize. As far as offering guidance counselors, they have school psychologists and they have mental health guidance, mental health counselors that are available to help the students with the issues they have, and I know there are extenuating circumstances with COVID-19 that may adversely affect the students' mental health, which affects their learning. But hopefully more programs that can discuss mental health and that can have mental health awareness can be put in place, programs and activities that can be generated and geared towards adults as well as children. So our teachers and staff can have exposure to that too, to have that opportunity.
Thank you.
I feel we have quite a few policies in place to address the mental and the emotional health of teachers and students. For example, we have policy EC for mental health. We also have our administrative group that we can follow as well. And we are, have other special programs that we've teamed with top health, mental health programs. And we also have, for our teachers, they've had what is called a snack chat where they come together and share concerns or try to motivate each other, encourage each other. We also have the ACES scores and training that the teachers and children go through, and we have a fantastic special needs program. Thank you.
Thank you, I want to make sure you're finished there. Same question to Mr. Hutchison.
I'm not so sure the district really needs a policy on mental health. As Ms. Douglas said, we have several policies that address certain aspects of mental health and regular health. Since I've been on the board, we've doubled, not tripled the staff in ESS with counselors and psychiatry psychologists and stuff of that nature. I don't know, we got PBIS, you know, practices, yeah, we got them all over the place. I think probably the biggest thing is be kind. You know, we're all in the same boat right now. We're stressed out over this COVID and everything else that goes along with it. Forget about what's going on in two weeks. But, you know, we just need to be kind to each other.
Thank you, and same question, Mr. Burns.
Yes. That's a really good question because it's been very stressful for everyone, teachers and students. The students especially. I can tell you firsthand, I have three daughters in school right now. And my, my second daughter is in the third grade and she is on her fourth Spanish teacher since September. Teacher attrition, they're dropping, I was privy to an email the other day that was sent to the district where the teacher was so upset that she wanted to resign due to the lack of, the lack of leadership and clarity that she was, has been given. She was complaining about having to be the custodian of her room, having to, you know, clean it every hour. She's the cafeteria worker because they're eating in her room as well. She's, she's extremely frustrated. As a society, we have to, this is unacceptable. We have to come together with policies and procedures to make sure that this teacher does not quit. Teach you retention, what's the point of having all these programs if our teachers that teach these programs quit on us? Thank you.
Thank you, and we are over to Ms. Erby, same, same question.
Thank you. Mental health and emotional health is so vital. And about a week and a half ago, I participated in a walk for mental health. And this is an issue that so many people deal with, it doesn't discriminate young and old. I'm glad to hear that you guys mentioned some of the policies, I think it's awesome, I didn't know anything about it, so I did learn something tonight, which is awesome. But I guess I want to speak about practices that can be used within the district and within the schools. And I would say there definitely needs to be a practice that we are creating a safe place for people to share and to openly discuss their mental health and emotional issues. One way that we can do that is create support groups on school campuses. I think that'd be awesome, because so many times nobody wants to share those things because of the stigma. So yeah, just creating a safe place within our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Our third question will be asked by Milan Louis Harris. Welcome, Milan.
Hi, my name is Milan Louis Harris and I'm representing Northwestern, Northwestern High School, thank you so much for having me. My question is, what motivates you to run for the Board of Trustees? If elected, what will be your priorities?
Ms. Douglas, we'll start with you.
Start with me, okay. When I first ran for the school board, I wanted to be an advocate for teachers and for the South Side. And at that time too, that was the first time the school board was divided into districts before we were elected all-at-large. And then, as I continued with my first four years and moved to the next years, we had implemented a lot of programs. We started with technology. We also brought about the STEMS. We brought about the arts. We brought about the language emergence program. They were at different times, but each time a new something would come along with us looking at student and creating a choice for them to make, to be strong in whatever area that they was working in. Also, we have, we ATC. We know we have a lot of students who are not going to be college material or whatever, can't afford to go to college. But they have a skill there for each one of them that can major in and move right on into the workforce. Also, we have, I was interested in all the new buildings that was taking place. When I first came on, we have, working on Saluda Trail. Then after Saluda Trail, we started building some of the middle school, Dutchman Creek. And new elementary schools. So I always tell the person that I'm a nosy and I like to see the end of a product.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. Mr. Hutchison, same question.
Oh, what motivates me, what got me started in the first place, excuse me, was my three children. They all had college degrees. I don't. My two daughters have their masters and they're both English teachers in the high school level. My son is an electronics engineer. Right out of college, two months later, he's landed a seventy thousand dollar job, seventy thousand dollar a year job with Microsoft. He had to move, but that was okay, they paid for that. The changes that I've seen happen with our own student population, talking to them, watching them, you know, just in general, I've seen the changes coming over the years and that's made me proud because I've been part of that. And as Ms. Douglas said, our choice programs. Now, the eight, the Applied Technology Center is a soft spot for me. And we've seen expansion in there also, which has been a real thrill for me. It's, you know. And there's, there's my priority, the eight, the Applied Technology Center, I'd like to see more programs.
Thank you. Mr. Burns, same question.
Yes, I'm a native son to Rock Hill, I was born and raised here, my four kids were born here, so was my wife. To compete, I want to see Rock Hill compete with Fort Mill, Clover, and the rest of our surrounding communities. We have, we have an amazing foundation that we can build upon. But right now, the foundation needs more leadership. I can give it that leadership. I'm in, I'm in automobile business, the most competitive business probably in the country. And I surround myself with the best people to make sure the job gets done. And I promise if I'm elected to the board, the job will get done.
Ms. Erby.
I actually thought about running a few years ago, but I thought, you know, we have some pretty good people on board and I think they're really doing a phenomenal job. When I heard that Ms. Reed was leaving, I was like, oh, who's going to fill those shoes? And at one point, I wasn't sure they were going to have a replacement, but I'm glad to see that her daughter will be stepping in. But, but that was like my push. But the reason why I would like to serve on the board and serve our students and kind of, and to advocate for our teachers and families within the community, because I am all for Rock Hill, I love Rock Hill, I've been here all of my life, I am a advocate for youth, it is my passion, I'm able to do so within my profession. Again, I have school-aged children, so I know the issues that students are facing. And then also, I'm always being approached by moms, students, and families within the community. So I definitely want to be a voice that's going to represent as well as advocate for those folks.
Thank you.
I am a lifetime resident of this community. I am a product of Rock Hill Schools. I'm also a parent who've had children that have attended and grandchildren that are currently attending schools in this district. I wanted to give back to the community and ensure that our children have the best education and opportunities that can be afforded to them. We have a solid foundation that has already been established, we can only build and go further and offer what is best for our children. And that's why I wanted to become part of the board.
Thank you. I'll ask Milan to come back to the podium for our fourth question.
What is your background experience or expertise and how will you use these to better our students and the community?
In this question, we will start with Mr. Hutchison.
Thank you. Expertise in the education business isn't anything, I never went to school for education, but what I do have is life experience as an adult mentoring young adults and some older adults. Part of my life in, before I moved down here, twenty-six years ago, I spent twenty-five years in volunteer fire rescue EMS business. Retired as a captain. I mentored so many people through the firefighter programs, rescue programs, and EMS programs. And in that course of time, also as a, my real career, which is a master automotive technician, about forty-two years of that mentoring young people and older people in the same capacities, trying to make them better people. Better at their jobs, better at their mind and, you know, just socially also. And I'm hoping that would be what would be the stalwart for me being on the board is having that capacity.
Thank you. Mr. Burns, same question.
Yes, my background experience, I graduated from Northwestern High School in two thousand and one, then went on to the Citadel and graduated in two thousand and five. So I've seen a lot of leadership through there and I've been running, I have a hundred and fifty employees right now. I've been operating for about fifteen years total. I'm, that's what I do. I put together a team, I put together a plan, and I execute the plan, I hold people accountable. I think this is, that's why I'd be the perfect fit for the board. That's what we need right now, is accountability. It's a tough time. We have, we have got to make decisions and give our parents and our teachers and our faculty and our students a clear and defined goal and forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Erby, same question.
My background, of course, I am a parent, again, I have students that are school age. I am active in the, in many communities within the city of Rock Hill through my nonprofit and also as well as networking and partnering with many other nonprofits as well. So I am in the heart of the community, I'm out there, as they would say, boots on the ground. I am meeting folks, I am speaking with folks and listening and hearing their concerns. And then also, when I look at the board now, as it is, we have, again, phenomenal people. We have other parents on the board, I think we have a couple of business managers and we have retired teachers. I am a social worker, so I would definitely bring a new skill set, different point of views, and just another fresh point of view as well.
Thank you. Thank you as well, Dr. Cook and Ms. Cole, for making sure our lights stay on. Much appreciated. Ms. Cherry, same question.
My background is that I am a former chaplain with the Rock Hill Police Department. I have served in that capacity. I am a servant leader where I am an associate minister with the local church here. I oversee the outreach and evangelism ministry. I also work with our youth as far as our youth groups within the church as a church school leader and as a class leader. I will build on my expertise and things I have in that capacity as well as a degree in pastoral care and counseling to hopefully be able to offer my services for the students, for parents, for the community in any way that I can help be an advocate for them and help meet their needs as far as to push our education and opportunities for our students and our community.
Thank you. Ms. Douglas?
Okay, first of all, I am an educator, I am a teacher, and with Ms. Reed leaving, I might be the only one left, or we might not have one at all. But I'm a parent of four children who graduated from Rock Hill School District. And have been in education for forty-four years in North and South Carolina. I am a product of Rock Hill School District, schools I attend. Also, I've been very active in programs, serving as PTO presidents, members of booster clubs and other programs. Also, I use my teacher background to help select programs for children and for students for their achievement and feedback to the community. I also volunteer with Alliance Club in testing the children's eyes in Rock Hill School District. I also volunteer with Samaritan Feet and putting shoes on the children's feet in the Rock Hill School District. So I feel like I have a lot to offer and have offered a lot. I've been in the classroom myself and I know what it's like to receive something that you really have no idea of exactly how to carry it out and how the end product is going to be.
Thank you. Back to the podium is Tyanna Wongse for the fifth question. This question, we will start with Mr. Burns.
My question for you is what do you think is the greatest challenge in Rock Hill School District currently? And how will you, as a board member, help resolve it? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. The greatest challenge right now is getting the kids a safe option to go back five days. That's the number one thing we have to do, we have got to get these kids back to school that need it and the parents back to work that need to get back to work. There's a lot of families out there that are hurting. I have, I lost a lot of employees through this, only because they had to go home and watch their kids. It should not be, it should not be an option, it should not be, we, we have to decide whether to educate your kids or feed your kids. So right now, five days is number one. Second is teacher retention. We have got to keep our teachers. We are losing teachers left and right, they're, they're stressed, I understand, everyone is stressed. Right now, we have got to work on teacher retention and then down the road is infrastructure. We have a lot of schools right now that are at half-capacity. We have a lot of programs that aren't working. We need to look at that down the road and see what we can do with them and improve on the ones that are working. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Erby, same question.
I just kind of want to piggyback that I agree the five-day week, that's definitely a challenge and a concern and then also teacher retention. Teachers are so vital, we need our teachers, so we definitely need to. and then also teacher retention. Teachers are so vital. We need our teachers, so we definitely need to, um, make sure we're maintaining our teachers here in our schools. Um, but another concern that I would like to share is the concern that a lot of parents have in regards to, um, their students with learning disabilities may not receive instructional, uh, resources in that instructional, that time that they would, would have gotten during a five-day. And so that's, and also for me as a parent with a child with a learning disability, that's my concern as well. So I understand that concern, um, with those parents. So, um, as a board member, how, how can I resolve it? Well, there's no I. I can't do it. There's six other people. Um, but number one, I would definitely say just listen to the concerns of the parents. Uh, and, and again, I can relate to some of that concern. And then also just assessing what's working, what's not working, and how can we kinda meet the middle ground? And then last but not least, collaboratively working with the remainder of the board members because again, it's not a what can I do, but what we can do as a whole.
Thank you. Ms. Cherry, same question.
I have to piggyback on a lot of the great answers that have already been given. Uh, the main challenge I too feel is COVID nineteen. And our safety and care for our students should be our main priority. Uh, due to this virus, we have a lapse in time of lack of education. And how can we build those students back up to the levels where they need to be, uh, in the most compassionate way, but also bring them up to the levels in the most expedite, to expedite their learning process to get us back up where we need to be at state levels. I too have a concern with, uh, schools not running at full capacity and teacher retention. But we, as a board, have to work together in order to resolve these issues with feedback from parents and feedback from the community, their questions and concerns, so we can make good decisions that'll be best for everyone across the board.
Thank you. Ms. Douglas, same question. And just a reminder, if at any point you would like for me to repeat the question, I'm willing to do so. So Ms. Douglas, the question's to you.
I'm good. I'm good. All right, uh, we all know the biggest challenge is dealing with the virus. And it was totally a surprise to everyone when we went home one day and marched and then was told school was closed for short, short period of time. Next thing we know, school was closed for the rest of the school year. So that put a big load on the superintendent and his staff. And we also had to, uh, support him with the different feedbacks. And we must remember too that the board makes policy and hires the superintendent. The superintendent takes care of the day-to-day operation. So I feel that being a support for the superintendent and his staff, being able to move forward and work out situations and would monitor and adjust things that take place. I also feel like we work closely with safety and security for our environment by hiring resource officers and different one increasing that. Also, as some of them mentioned before about the retention, recruitment and retention of the faculty as well as student achievement that we have to be in line for and to provide that quality education for each child regardless. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hutchinson, same question.
Well, aside from COVID nineteen, probably the biggest challenges this district has is teacher and student retention. We're losing students almost as fast as we lose teachers lately. Um, I think as far as the teacher side of it goes, as a board as a whole, all we can do is support the administration and what programs or ideas they come up with as long as it's financially feasible with the funding that we get to retain teachers however we have to. We want the best and the brightest. And as we know, there's a teacher shortage going on countrywide. So, you know, we've got to be very innovative, very outside-the-box thinking. To students, we have the choice program. Expand on that. We're losing students to the, the charter schools and some of the private schools. We need to offer programs that will attract them back to our own district. Whether it be the expanding steam, I don't know how much more we can expand on that. The arts program, ATC, uh, IBAP, you know, the dual credit courses. Yeah, I could go on with a whole list, but you get the idea. You know, we've got, it's a two-sided problem for the district.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Uh, this next question is from the students, but I will be asking it. Um, and so the question is, uh, how will you be sure to get regular feedback and input from families, students, faculty, and the community to identify needs, areas that need work, and the impact of board policies? And we will start with Ms. Erby for this question.
Um, I would say, um, to get regular feedback, I would definitely continue being active in the community and working with community agencies and partners. Also, um, for example, for this forum, all, um, creating opportunities for student leaders that represents their schools to share their concerns, um, and also identifying some of those needs by assessing, um, schools and communities to see, uh, exactly what those issues are.
Thank you. Ms. Cherry, same question.
I feel that as far as my being available to the community and to the students and teachers and staff, I am not technologically savvy, so, but I will try to offer myself up on social media as far as having a forum where questions can be asked, que- uh, issues and concerns can be put there where I can bring those to the table and address those personally. Also be available via email or telephone to those who may need to communicate with me, uh, to, so that I can address their concerns. And that's where I stand with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Douglas?
To me, feedback and input for the group, I will have, like I already have, an email, refer them to the district's we- website page, also attend some of the PTO meetings and SIC meetings and be visible as much as possible in areas and sections where in case their parents have any questions or any, uh, concerns that, uh, I will be able to present those or address those with the board in some type of way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hutchinson, same question.
Uh, surveys across the district, students, staff, parents, non-parents, that way. Uh, community discussions, as Ms. Douglas said, you know, going out in the public, talking. And probably the biggest thing is have an open door policy and an open ear. You know, every one of us on the board has our phone number listed on the website, has our email listed on the website. You got a question, you got a concern, email us, call us, you know, we're gonna answer you. And for my case, you know, if you email or call me, it might take twenty-four hours for me to respond because of my job and everything, so. But I will get back to you. Um, you know, and just, Mr. Frost and the administration are doing everything they possibly can to be as very transparent and very open-minded to feedback coming back from the community as a whole.
Thank you. Mr. Burns, same question.
Just like the policy I have all of my employees, I have an open door policy. You can come to me anytime with any situation. Um, heck, my email address is jayburns@burnsautomotive.com. Hit me up on it if you want to need to. But, uh, any problems, any concerns, any family matters, school, whether, whatever it is, I'm always, always there for you. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got two questions left, and Katia George will ask both of them, so welcome back to the podium.
How do you think the district has performed with regards to safety and security? What changes, if any, do you believe are necessary?
Thank you. We will start with Ms. Cherry this time.
As far as safety and security, I feel the district has done a wonderful job. They have implemented standards, uh, to make sure that our students are cared for as far as safety, uh, with the COVID especially, with making sure the cleaning and all of those practices are in place, and masks and shields around the desk. As for security, uh, at one point, the, uh, schools campuses were open. Now they have gates and they have to have security badges to entrance to the schools and have SRO officers and other security personnel as needed. Uh, as far as any changes, I feel that working within the board as the need arises and we can draw and make decisions on what need to be done and updated as far as safety and security. But I don't see any that's needed right now at this point.
Thank you. Ms. Douglas, same question.
I have to agree with Ms. Cherry. Uh, I think our safety and security is fantastic. Everything is in place, uh, to protect our children, and we have the special locks. We also have our ID badges for all workers. Visitors must stop in and get a name tag. Um, and also using passwords to change or to come back in to a building and everything. So I think we have done a fantastic job in setting up the barriers and everything for our children to be safe and all our employees and everything to be safe in that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hutchinson?
Um, pretty much, but Ms. Douglas said excellent. Um, and that's because the board had the foresight to see before we really got into all this fear over student safety, we had a survey, uh, evaluation done by professionals to evaluate our safety and security issues. And those were addressed. A great deal of them were taken care of in the last bond referendum. It's still ongoing, and as society changes and technology changes, it's always gonna change. So there's always gonna be updates and things we're gonna have to do, but I think, you know, excellent. And I hope you guys feel that way.
Thank you. Mr. Burns, same question.
Uh, definitely the, uh, the board and Dr. Cook, y'all have done an impeccable job with security and safety, uh, second to none. Thank you.
Um, and I'm just going to piggyback with everybody else saying, like I've said several times tonight, I think the board has done an amazing job. Um, you know, I'm on social media and I, you know, there, there's no way to please everybody, but I do appreciate the board taking charge and not allowing the bosses outside to dictate during what's going to keep our children safe and not only the students, but the teachers and the staff as well. So, yeah, very appreciative.
Thank you. Back to the podium, uh, for our final prepared question is Katia George.
What do you see as priorities for funding and what funding sources are available to the district?
In this question, we will begin with Ms. Douglas.
Tricky question, priority for funding. Um, some of our program that we have needs support and different types of funds wherein they can apply for grants. They can also apply for scholarships. We can also partner with business. Uh, several of our schools have partnered with some of the restaurants where certain nights, whatever they sell, the money goes to the school. Also, uh, of course, we know our taxes, and so we receive money from the state and from the county as well. And so we have to use it in special ways. We just cannot use it for anything. Everything has a title and a labor to it. So I think we have a lot out there that we can use as resources to help us with our funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hutchinson?
Funding priority, the state. That's our first stop. They fund us at the moment approximately seven hundred dollars less than they're supposed to by law. And they've been doing it ongoing for the last ten years or so consistently. Um, you know, we get seventy-two, approximately seventy-two percent of our funding comes from the state. The rest is local taxes or other means that are less than one percent. Um, we've got grant programs that, you know, the district and individual schools apply for. Uh, probably one of the best schools that I know for grants is Northside. They get some phenomenal grants for their arts program. Um, they got a grant writer up there who's unbelievable, apparently. Um, you know, the, you know, we get, we, the district got a grant not too long ago for one or two SRO officers, I believe. But if I'm correct, one or two? Four. Four SRO officers. And that's, uh, that's a, uh, continuing funding source for the time being. Uh, one of our best sources for the teachers anyways is the Rock Hill School Foundation. They do a phenomenal job issuing grants to the teachers and in some cases, some of the schools too. Um, you know, we, there's different streams of money coming into the district for funding. It's just a matter of really more to state than anything else to get with the program and fund it the way they're supposed to by law.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Same question, Mr. Burns?
Thank you. That's a great question. Uh, the first we have to look at is how are we competing in the area? Uh, the first thing that a young family is gonna look at moving to the area is how are the schools, are schools attractive? Uh, right now, we have, of course, the Carolina Panthers coming to Rock Hill. We have tremendous growth on the way. We have got to have the school system that attracts people to move here rather than our surrounding areas. That's our tax base. So we have to grow our tax base. When I was coming along twenty years ago, Fort Mill was tiny. They were, it wasn't, it was, it was abysmal. They have more students than us now. The reason they have more students than we do now is because they are attractive. Our, right now, we're at sixty percent free reduced lunch. We can correct this within ten years. All we have to do is focus on the school systems, which is our tax, or, and attract people to move here, which would be our tax base, and we could fix this problem in ten years. So that would be my main focus is to get our school system where it needs to be, get our SAT scores to state average, if not higher. We're Rock Hill. We're the sixth largest city in the, in the state. I think we can do better than below state average. That's, that's the number one focus we should be on right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Erby?
Thank you. Uh, well, as I don't have access to a lot of the funding sources and, um, you know, what the board can see that from someone from the outside can't see as far as the top priorities, I can't really speak on that because I do not currently have access to those things. But, um, I definitely look forward if I am selected to be added to the board to assessing those things and working diligently with, diligently with the board to make the best decisions for the schools and the teachers, um, students and staff within those schools.
Thank you. Ms. Cherry?
As far as funding sources, uh, I know that we have access to state, federal, county, and individual funding. As a priority, I feel that competitive salaries across the, across the board to retain and maintain qualified staff. Um, the resources that our children need, especially during the pandemic, especially with technology, our teachers and parents to make sure they have all the resources that they need during this, uh, new learning, uh, system that we're in. Also, I feel that working towards helping our younger students as far as pre-K and that type. Right now, they have a two-and-a-half-hour day most times. But if it can be extended to a full day like kindergarten, first grade, they have a better foundation to build on. foundation to build on moving to the next grade level. Also, during this pandemic, we, a lot of families are suffering financially across the board. And they are currently offering free lunches and breakfast for the students, all students. I would like for that to continue. A lot of students have gone hungry because they didn't want to have the stigma of receiving free lunch. But if it was offered across the board, I think would be beneficial too as far as some of the priorities that could be offered right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone. That is the prepared questions. But before we wrap up, I want to provide each of you an opportunity to provide final thoughts. If you just speak directly to the community, we've got folks watching this evening on Facebook and YouTube. So, this is your opportunity to speak directly to the voters. And we will continue the same order we have used throughout the evening. So, final thoughts offered by Mr. Hutchinson first.
Well, thank you, Mr. Frost. I guess what I could say to the public is, if you haven't noticed, that you can see that I have a vision for the district, at least for the next four years, if I were to be reelected to the board. And I'm hoping that I will be. You can go to my Facebook page, I have one, Re-Elect Terry Hutchinson for Rock Hill School District, and go there if you want, have any comments you want to make, hopefully on the positive side. If they're negative, you can call me on those. But yes, I'm hoping you do see that, you know, I have a vision. I can see it. One team, one mission, one Rock Hill.
Thank you. Mr. Burns, your final thoughts?
Thank you. I guess you could say I'm applying for a job. I'd, I know that I can get us through to the goal line on this through leadership and my experience in the private sector, bringing it to the public sector. I can make Rock Hill School System home. But I have to work with the other board members and of course, Dr. Cook over here. And I know I'd work well with everyone. I just need your help, the Rock Hill voters, to get me across the finish line and get our kids, our future, on track. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Erby, final thoughts?
I definitely would encourage folks to go out and vote for me. I will definitely bring a fresh, new voice, a new point of view. Also, I am someone who is passionate about the community. I have worked with so many families, so many students for many, many years. And also, if I am chosen to walk into this position, I look forward to serving at least one to two terms. I definitely don't want to stay in this turn, in this position long-term because I really believe in growing future leaders and I definitely want to open the door and pave the way for youth like we have here to step into the position after me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cherry, and your final thoughts as well?
My final thoughts, first of all, I'd like to thank the high school students for giving us this opportunity to showcase our talents and what we have to offer and bring to the table. And also like to thank the Rock Hill School Board currently for allowing us to be in this forum and setting. I would like to recap that I am a person willing to help in any way possible, serve my community, to be an advocate for those who are in need of willing and listening ear, and to work hard and strive to make sure our children have the best educational foundation they can have, opportunities available for them because they are our future. And I'm willing to be available for those who want to talk, listen, share their concerns, social media, email, phone. And I thank you again for this opportunity today.
Thank you. Ms. Douglas, your final thoughts?
I'd like to thank everyone for your input and your questions. And I would also like to say to the public in my community that I would like to return being the oldest teacher. And I feel like I could be an advocate for teachers. I've been in the classroom and have good thoughts and have experienced. I've also trained teachers with student teachers in different activities. So, I will, being a product of the Rock Hill School District, I have seen so much growth taking place and everything, even though I was back in time of segregation, I still see things continuing to growing more and more each day. And I'd like to see our students continue and for high achievements and everything and being able to lead Rock Hill School District, being productive in society. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. Thank you, each candidate who has been with us this evening. And as we close our event this evening, I just want to say thank you once again to our student leaders, as each of you have done as well. Thank you to our student leaders for being with us this evening. And again, representing Northwestern High School, Melan Lewis Harris, representing Rock Hill High School, Tiana Wongse, and representing South Point, Katia George. And I failed to mention at the beginning, we have additional behind-the-scenes help that our several students are helping with. And I'd like to recognize Zakaya Bell, also from South Point, who has been doing an admirable job this evening, stepping into my shoes and monitoring social media during a board function. So, that is a tall task and thank you for doing this for us. Also, CJ Owens from South Point has served as our event photographer. So, thank you to each student who has helped make tonight successful. To our viewers online, those of you watching on Facebook, those of you watching on YouTube, thank you as well for taking time this evening to watch live tonight's, tonight's forum. Lastly, it is incredibly important that you take time on November 3rd or before to go vote. It matters not if we participate tonight and listen and don't take action. So, it's important that we go vote. And when you head to the polls, take a friend. And last but not least, thank you to Rock Hill. Thank you for being with us. Have a great evening.